Things spray out and clean out better. But there's a lot of things going on out there. He appreciates everybody that does help and support with sharing posts of these animals that are at the shelter. They do a good job of putting it on Facebook and we all do a good job trying to share that information so that maybe somebody will see that dog and think that's a perfect fit for them. So, that's all I have.
Thank you. Just one comment. I did receive word from Mr. Walker that the Huey will be there and will be giving rides to passengers.
Great, great. That's good news.
Councilman Stevenson?
Preutilities gave an update on the long-term control plan and Miami County Economic Development Authority discussed the next alley that they will be redoing.
Thank you. Appreciate all the LAIS on reports, everybody. It's great keeping everybody informed. Moving to old business, we are looking at ordinance thirteen dash twenty twenty-five, an ordinance to repeal and replace sections ninety point one five through ninety point one seven of the Peru Municipal Code of Ordinance Beekeeping. Do we have a motion to reconsider?
I make a motion that we reconsider.
Second.
Roll call.
Huber?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Foduchny?
Yes.
Stevenson?
Yes.
Holry?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Discussions or questions regarding the request to repeal and replace sections of this? You've all had an opportunity, I think, to review it. Planning Committee gave favorable?
Yes, they did. This has been presented by the state apiary. Dustin's looked it over. We've all looked it over. All the corrections have been made and so forth. Even though this is a fairly minor ordinance, such as we were not going to have, you know, a city full of bees, but without this ordinance, anybody can put bees in their yard as we speak right now if we understate rules which are vague at best. Even H.O.A.'s must allow rules of bees. We sat on this for quite a while and people could be putting bees in their yard right now and we would have absolutely no recourse because there's no city ordinance. They would go by state ordinance. So, it's time to figure this out. Thank you.
Comments, concerns? I'm sorry, yes, sir. Sure, come on up, Tim. Could you please state your name for the record? Oh, no microphone. Okay, we got it. Thank you, Dave.
Okay. Most of you know that I've been kind of behind this. I was the one that prompted it in the first place. But I've had to come in front of you guys and the Planning Commission multiple times. I think there's four times where I've been up here speaking and one issue, the main issue, as far as the swarming is concerned, has not been addressed. And that's the biggest issue that I have. They have raised the number of colonies up to two colonies if you have one quarter acre, which is great. That's the minimum that anybody would recommend for keeping bees. You should have had two colonies. One colony, very good chance it's going to die. You keep two colonies, you can keep them alive. But as far as when it's time for those colonies to swarm, there's no allowance at all in here for splitting of hives. If you split a hive, you've got more colonies. But you have to split them because there's no way to keep them from swarming without splitting hives. It can be a temporary allowance or whatever, but there has to be an allowance for that. And then on top of it, we're still not in the plans with the law. This minimum lot size of 5,000 square feet in order to keep any bees, the law, and I'll read it here. It says, "Except as provided in subsection B and notwithstanding any other law, a unit may not adopt or continue in effect any ordinance, rules, regulation, or resolution that prohibits a person from beekeeping on property that the person owns, rents, or leases. A unit may adopt an ordinance, rule, regulation, or resolution that regulates beekeeping either concerning the number of active beehives that person may operate and the location of beehives on the property and that conforms to standards established by the Apiary Inspectors of America." Well, that last part there, according to the state apiarist who I've spoken to, there is no such thing as standards established by the Apiary Inspectors of America. So, that really, we can kind of ignore. But the first part up here says that you can't prohibit a person from beekeeping on property that they own, rent, or lease. So, it doesn't say if it's over a certain amount of property. If I had five square feet, technically I should be able to keep bees according to the state law. Now, it does allow for the city to make ordinances regarding the location and number of hives. So, but if we say, oh, well, yeah, you can keep hives as long as the number is zero, that would, that's essentially what we're doing here for lots that are under 5,000 square feet. Technically, right now, with the current ordinance, if we ignored the state law, I could keep bees on top of my building. It's about a 2,000-square-foot lot. But the roof of the building is 35 feet high. I could put a beehive up there and it'd be in, within the ordinance we currently have. With this ordinance, I wouldn't be able to do it. There'd be multiple reasons. The setbacks, there are ways to reduce the setbacks and to make it reasonable that are not in here that I've discussed. But, you know, the width of the lot's 20 feet wide. Well, if it's 10 feet from either, from any property line, well, I could put it smack in the middle and I'd still be within 10 feet of either line. So, and anyway, there's that. There's also the requirement to get a permit. Now, you could, you know, it's understandable that the city might want to keep track of who's got hives, where they're located, those kinds of things. But here at the end here, it says that the beekeeper shall submit an application for apiary registration, state form forty-seven oh seven five. This is not a location or number restriction. It's also, that's a voluntary form. And if you talk to the state apiarist about it, he would tell you that they're more interested in commercial operations, not something somebody's doing in their backyard. This form forty, or this form here, if you require somebody to get that before they are allowed to keep bees on their property, that goes against state law. Let's see. There's another thing here. Oh, there's a requirement here that hives be, they must have movable frames. Well, yes, that's a state law, I believe. That's usually a state law in most states. I haven't really looked it up, but it's, should be a state law. But that is not a location or number restriction. So, that cannot be in there. You know, and there's nothing in this, in the state law that says you can even incorporate state laws in the city ordinance. You can only make those two restrictions, location and number of hives. There's the setbacks. So, the setback requirements, for instance, the most egregious one is the 100 feet from any school or public park. Well, there's certainly properties in this town that their whole property would be within 100 feet of a school or a public park. And we could say, you know, you can't have within five miles of a school or public park. And that would, you know, certainly, that would not be legal. This shouldn't be legal either. So, basically, there are ways to accommodate somebody with a much smaller yard, 100 feet. Let me address that first. The 100 feet setback from a school or public park, it sounds like it's a great idea that it's going to keep the bees from getting to people in the school or the public park. But if you have the proper flyway barrier and have the bees oriented the proper direction, that's not going to be an issue unless there's, you know, plants that the bees are wanting to get to, flowers and that kind of stuff. If they're there, it doesn't matter if they're two miles away, those bees will get to them. So, you know, we're not really accomplishing much by putting a setback to 100 feet except for it might assuage somebody's fears that doesn't understand bee behavior. So, and anyway, this thing keeps coming forward and I'm the one that put it forward, but it seems like people are trying to keep me from knowing that it's coming in front of people. I didn't know that the Planning Commission was going after it. I had to be told it was coming in here at the last minute in order for me to come here and speak against it again. And I want to speak for it. I mean, I talked to the mayor, I talked to Bobby, I talked to Erica, and I talked to Tim, all in person. I've talked to everybody else in emails. I really want something that's worked right to be done, but this one I don't believe is the correct thing to do. The, and as I said every time I've spoken about this and against it, that swarming issue, that's the biggest thing because that can cause property damage. That, you get a swarm that gets loose and this ordinance would require it. You get a swarm that's loose and it gets in somebody's wall, it can cause thousands of dollars worth of damage because you can't just, you know, kill the bees and think that's the only thing that's wrong. They've got honey in there and comb and it attracts pests and it can cause rot and all sorts of things. You have to get in there, remove the comb and the honey, and you also have to block off any entrance because the fact that there was comb and honey in there at one time will attract more bees. And so, it's, anyway, that's a nuisance. If there's any nuisance that a bee can do, that's it and we need to not do that. So, we need to have an allowance for extra, you know, for temporary extra hives. I like the, I like the fact that we upped this to two colonies because that's, that should be the minimum anybody should keep. If you're not keeping two colonies, it's kind of like, oh, it's kind of like keeping horses without some kind of shelter from, you know, the weather. You know, you gotta, you gotta have enough resources, enough things for them to be safe and secure and healthy. And with only one colony, you're not doing that. It's bad practice. It's, but anyway, I would, I would like for you guys to vote this down again. And I hate it because this keeps coming in and in and in and in. But, and I hear that the state apiarist was talked to. I don't know what kind of conversation was had there, but, and I've talked to, or I sent something to Dustin and I heard that you had wanted to talk to me and I gave him my contact information, but I never heard from you. But I think that my concerns are valid. I think that the, my concerns about the law and about the swarming and about all these things are valid concerns that this ordinance does not address and it should. And if we can, if you would just, when this goes through your committee or whatever, where it gets done, somebody could just contact me and I can go over it. It's the very, I've had this for like two hours and I was able to find these things. It's very easy for me to see them as a previous beekeeper. But for somebody who's not been a beekeeper, you probably don't notice that these might be problems. So, I mean, you don't have to contact me, just get ahold of a beekeeper at least, but I am offering to be that beekeeper. I did it for seven years and I can help. But anyway, if you guys have any questions, I would be happy to answer them.
First off, we appreciate your work and dedication to this and that you have given us quite a bit of good information. I took your information along with the prior drafted ordinance, sent it to Jared Spakowski who is the apiary specialist of the DNR, the King Bee. He, I asked him if he could look at our ordinance, look at your notes, comments, and tell us what changes we need to, needed to make to make our ordinance compliant and everything. And the ordinance you guys have been presented with is just that, the ordinance with his integrated comments, feedback. According to him, he believes that ordinance, with, once we make the additional changes or the changes that you guys have presented to you, that it would be compliant with all state statute and a solid ordinance. He didn't make any additional recommendations as far as swarming or indicate that we can't regulate lot size. And again, my interpretation of the state law is we cannot have an ordinance that prevents the city from prohibiting the raising of bees. Our current ordinance is old. It does just that, prohibits the raising of bees in the city limits. We are most certainly allowed to, and state statute is clear, set regulations as to location and property and make other reasonable regulations as it relates to the raising of bees. We, this is, our ordinance is not a universal prohibition against anyone from keeping bees, just setting minimum lot sizes, which is not a prohibition. It's well within our right.
And I'll just add this additional input. You know, this was created not just out of the blue, but with Tim's comments, but also from ordinances in a couple of other cities within Indiana. And, you know, we've been working on this now since March of last year.
Yeah.
So, that in addition to what Dustin has done in talking with the state apiary and adding, you know, you even added some side comments that we could see how you integrated those. I just, I just feel that even with some of Tim's objections to, or suggested changes to this, I feel that we've got something that's workable now and it's reasonable and we have spent a lot of time on it. And I just kind of, now if we, you know, want to consider to, if we pass it tonight and we want to consider to, you know, make changes, then maybe we can do that down the road. But originally, it was, as Dustin said, I think originally, it said we could not have bees. That was our ordinance, that we could not have bees.
No, there were allowances. So, you could keep them, so like the current ordinance, if you keep them up 30 feet in the air, you can have bees. Also, if you had the ability to keep them within a certain lot size, I can't remember what that was. But the one that pertained to me is the one I remember the most and that was the one that, 30 feet in the air. So, technically, I could keep them. But with this ordinance, I wouldn't be able to keep bees on my property.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Tim.
Thank you, Tim. Any more comments?
Mayor, I'd like to just make a couple.
Yes, please.
Reading through this and everything, the one thing that I find us lacking, there's no medical perspective here. I thought that was kind of interesting. Okay, the medical world, okay. I think there's a, they play a very important role. 1% of the population, okay, has, are allergic to bee stings. Okay, 100 deaths a year attributed to anaphylaxis, where the breathing shuts down, simply you cannot breathe. All right, so you may think, well, 100 people, what's that? Well, that's human beings. So, Tim, my question, workable or risky? Something to think about is another question. If the city passes this bee ordinance, is the city liable for bee stings resulting in death?
No.
No. Okay, you answered my question. Thank you, Dustin.
First off, the state has mandated that we allow bees in town.
Yeah.
So, the medical portion of it, it's already mandated that we do.
Yeah.
We don't have a regulation. We don't have this ordinance. If we get a complaint or something, we have nothing to fall back on.
Yeah.
As far as the medical thing, anybody can get stung by bee any time. How are you going to tell which is necessary?
Right. I understand and I appreciate your concern, Joe. I was just wanting to represent the medical field because there were some concerns in my community. So, thank you, Dustin.
Well, my question, Dustin, is like with the 35 feet being, does that go away with this? Or would that like, if you had that, the other ones don't matter as far as the distance? Like the 100-foot?
In the previous iteration, there was a, there was a height allowance, but in this one, it's been removed.
I just wasn't sure if you, you didn't meet the requirements of the distance, if you went with the height, if that would work as well?
Sorry, just looking at this real quickly. I think to answer your question.
Kind of an either-or type thing?
As it's written, this is basically a repeal and replace, or actually an ordinance to repeal and replace sections ninety point one five thing. So, it takes that out of there entirely? Because again, we want to regulate the lot sizes more so than where the bees are located because there's, there are some very small lots in town to where we wouldn't want people to keep bees on. I mean, it just doesn't make sense to, they don't own enough area. And I think regardless of the height, being on such a small lot could pose the risk of public health and safety.
Well, that would be true if you didn't understand what bee behavior is. Bees don't, I mean, I've discussed this with multiple people. When they leave their hive, they go up, they go out, and then when they see what they're landing off the porch, they come down. And then they take the exact same path back. So, if they're, if they're 10 feet above the ground, they're not going to be hanging around where people are, you know, they're going to be above their heads. They're never going to come down unless they're standing right next to flowers. And it doesn't matter that bees will fly two miles from their hive. So, that, you know, that's, that's really not, the size of a lot is really not an issue. And that's why the state didn't feel it necessary to, to make allowances to ban beekeeping on smaller lots.
Dustin, is this considered the first reading that we just, if we make a motion to just consider or do we?
I'd consider and adopt.
Okay. All right.
So, two separate motions to consider, then a motion to adopt.
Okay.
Because Joe does make a good point. As of right now, we have an ordinance that prohibits them. However, our ordinance goes against that statute at this point.
Well, here's the thing. If you think that it's okay to, to limit keeping of bees on certain sized properties, but allow it on others, and that essentially, I guess that's because you allow it on some. What's allowed on some right now, why is the current ordinance not legal?
Because there's a prohibition unless it gets to those certain elevations.
So, unless it gets to a certain lot size, there's a prohibition as well?
Not a lot size. Has nothing to do with lot size.
So, if I have a 2,000-square-foot lot, I'm not prohibited from keeping bees?
If that building's within 500 feet of any other residential or commercial property, then yes.
That's not what the law, that's not what this says.
That's what our current ordinance says. Prohibits the keeping and raising of bees within city limits, within 500 feet of any building or other structure where people dwell or reside or work or conduct business unless the owner, owner or keeper of bees contains them so that the bees are confined to their own premises.
What does C. one?
C. one, I don't have it laid out that way, but I'm assuming the elevation aspect.
Says the minimum lot size to maintain two colonies shall be 5,000 square feet with an additional 5,000 square feet of lot size per second hive.
You're talking about on the new ordinance, sorry. The old one?
Yeah.
It doesn't regulate how close in proximity those are to other properties, whereas 500 feet is quite a bit of ground and as the previous ordinance stated, so yeah, more or less prohibition on, on containing bees.
Yeah, and this is more or less a prohibition on lot size of less than 5,000 square feet.
I disagree and so does the state apiary.
Well, he's not a lawyer.
Yes, but his lawyers direct him, so. He obviously has seen and reviewed ordinances for other municipalities and stuff, so.
Did you ask him that?
I have.
And he said?
He said, our ordinance complies and yeah, he's done this on more than one occasion with people and be happy to help and assist with us.
That's what he told me.
Counsel, have you heard enough?
I just have one question. Did, so this, he didn't, the state didn't have any concerns as far as the swarming or the splitting of hives, then?
He, I'm not sure if you guys were provided the copy. You should have been the copy with his notes and comments in there. And there previously was a draft which tried to address the swarming and the splitting of colonies, which he recommended that we remove some of the language from the ordinance to allow a little more freedom as to splitting of the hives and whatnot. So, yes, there were comments on there. I don't have that version up at this moment.
I have, I do have. I just wanted on the record.
What was the allowance?
What do you mean?
Where's, I don't see anything in the ordinance that has allowance for, for splitting of hives.
Do you see anything in the ordinance?
Other committees a couple of times. I think we kind of, you know, have beat this horse as far as we can and we feel comfortable with what we got. And Dustin shared this latest version of it with the state apiary and he did make those side notes as, as, you know, Erica had saw. So, I just really want to move ahead with this because I'm, I'm comfortable with what we have to vote on here. So, and so with that, I make a motion that we consider ordinance thirteen dash twenty twenty-five. Second.
And roll call.
Murphy?
Yes.
Foduchny?
Yes.
Stevenson?
Yes.
Holry?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Huber?
Yes.
So, at this time, we've had a motion to consider the ordinance. We've had discussion. Is this at the point where we have a vote from the council, a motion to adopt or a motion to reject?
I make a motion that we adopt ordinance thirteen dash twenty twenty-five.
Second. And roll call.
Foduchny?
No.
Stevenson?
Yes.
Holry?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Huber?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Thank you. Seeing nothing further under old business, we'll move to new business. We have a request from the YMCA Transit for a donation of $12,000 a year from the city. We have representatives from the YMCA come forward, please.
Good evening, everybody. I have copies of my notes if you'd like a printed copy.
I gave them, sorry.
You got them? Okay, thank you.
I think we all know you, but for those watching at home, could you?
I'll start by that. My name is Mark Demcek. I'm the executive director of the Miami County YMCA. I've served in that role for, I mean, today it might be exactly 14 years. It's really close.
Congratulations.
With me is Stacy Gaunt. She is the Transit Services Director. So, she oversees the direct day-to-day operations of all of our transit services. So, what we came here today to request is $12,000 per year for the next three years. That would support the operations of our YMCA Transit Program. The Transit Program is a public transit system and it's operated by the Y on behalf of the Miami County Commissioners. The amount of $12,000 is equal to the current support that the Miami County Commissioners provide on a yearly basis. It also would be matched dollar for dollar by a federal transportation grant. So, every dollar that we get, aside from fares, we can use as match for this federal grant. It equals about 2.3% of the total Y Transit operational budget, which was equivalent to 44 cents per ride based on a $19 per ride cost from 2024. And most importantly, it helps us close a funding gap, which I'll explain in a little bit. The funding gap is $3.48 per ride, so it gets us a little closer. Little bit of background, the YMCA has been in transportation since the 1960s when we took youth to Kokomo, to the skating rink, and to the outdoor pool there. In 1968, we transported seniors and disabled adults to social services, to lunch and other areas. In 2001 is when the current transit system started. The state of Indiana started a rural transit program. The Miami- The Miami, Miami County YMCA, because we already were transporting people and we already had some vehicles, invited, we were invited to be one of the founding agencies. So in two thousand and two, that was our first full year of operation. We had over twenty-three thousand public transit rides. And one other note, in twenty twenty, when the need for public transit decreased by a lot because of COVID, we, instead of putting the vans in the garage and sending our staff home, we repurposed those vans. In a hundred days, we delivered over thirty thousand meals to low-income households and seniors who we knew to be shut in. Those are meals that were prepared for the high school. We took them out on the vans and gave them out hundreds at a time. I provided the statistics for the twenty twenty four, the types of rides, a little over twenty-seven thousand rides. You can see they're for all, all different kinds of things, but they're all for people who don't have, for some reason or another, means of transportation. That could be just to go to the grocery store. It could be to go to the pharmacy. It could be to go to school. It could be to go to work. It could be for some kind of medical need, something just a routine checkup, or something as critical as dialysis or cancer treatment. Last year, seventy-one percent of the rides that we provided were within the Peru city limits. That's almost twenty thousand rides. Page two. A couple other quick facts. This is a YMCA program, but there's no requirement for YMCA membership to use the system. It is a public transit system under fifty-three eleven, so it's open to every, anyone, whether they have a car or not. We operate Monday through Friday, six AM to six PM, though we do provide rides earlier for critical medical needs like dialysis, enable all of our riders to get through their dialysis treatments. We've got to start pretty early in the morning. As I mentioned before, it's funded through, well, it operates under the rules and regulations of the fifty-three eleven Federal Transportation Grant. That's the Federal Transportation Authority, the FTA. They provide the regulations and all the rules. They give that to the states. INDOT in Indiana is the ruling state agency, so INDOT is the go-between. And then they, they communicate and grant to the county commissioners, and then technically the county commissioners oversees all of our, us. So we're a sub-recipient of a grant that flows all the way from Washington DC, at least part of it, all the way here to Miami County. There's four main sources of revenue for Y Transit, the federal grant I mentioned. This is hundreds of thousands of dollars. It does require fifty percent match, so every dollar that we can get with the federal grant has to be matched by a dollar locally. There's a couple different ways we match those dollars. The state of Indiana provides a pretty good grant right up, up front, usually around ninety to ninety-five thousand dollars per year. We can use that for the federal match. We also do local grants and contributions, which all can be used for federal match. That includes the support from the county, which I mentioned, United Way Grant, Area Five, Medicaid, and other private donations. The fourth source of income is fares. This is what we charge people to go one way. They cannot be used for federal match. So we cannot use those fares. Just doing a fare increase doesn't solve our problem. It also would put our fares outside of the affordability for the, our main market, which are people who don't have cars. I'm going to skip a lot of the operational income details. You, you have it in front of you. Other than to say in twenty twenty four, we had a sizable operational gap in our funding. It equated to three dollars and forty-eight cents per ride, or almost nineteen percent, a little over eighteen percent of every ride. That's why we're here today. We're looking for ways to help close that gap. I provided a chart. It's from twenty seventeen and compared twenty seventeen to twenty twenty four. I picked twenty seventeen because that was a pretty normal year for us. A couple of things I want to point out. One, the cost per ride was ten dollars and ten cents. This, right now, and for the last couple of years, is nineteen dollars. So there's been a substantial increase in the, in the expenses that required everything from fuel to insurance to labor costs. Everything's gone up, along with everything else in our, in our budget. So that's definitely put an extra pressure on our local match, because while the FTA grant will, has increased to meet that, the need for fifty percent match has also gone up, so it's made it a lot harder for us. At the same time that they've increased, some of our local sources have decreased. Our, our local donations, some of the grants that we get on a regular basis have decreased over the last couple of years. Medicaid, which we unfortunately lost certification for, for an entire year. Happy to say we are certified again, and we're starting to get Medicaid revenue again. It's going to take us a while to build that business back up. And then on the, on the, kind of a bright spot, the county's contribution was six thousand dollars. Last two years, it's been twelve thousand dollars. So they, they, we, we asked for more, they recognized the need and increased it. What we're looking for is equivalent of forty-four cents per ride. It's exactly the same as what the county's providing. It helps close the three dollar and forty-eight cent gap, doesn't close it all the way, but we're not asking for you to do that. The rest of our plan to close that gap, it, it includes Medicaid, building that business back up, which again, we're already doing that right now, and also going back to other local sources to see if they can increase their, their contributions. I think I'm going to stop there and let you ask any questions you might have.
Just for the public's information, Stacy and Mark has met individually with some of the council members to share this information prior to this meeting, so that we just didn't come here and to make a decision bam, right on the spot. And that's been very helpful, so that, you know, otherwise, some requests we have to table until we have time to really think through it. But I appreciate you making the effort to set up meetings to talk to us and, and share this information. And, you know, the, I have been asked by a couple of council members, hey, you know, there's, in, in our city budget, there's a hundred thousand dollars a year that shows up as a contribution to the YMCA. But that's a commitment. That's the commitment, when the YMCA was built, a ten-year commitment that goes towards operations. It doesn't go towards Y Transit. So I just wanted to clarify that, that that was something, you know, separate.
Yeah, if I could clarify that just a step more. That contribution is to the capital project?
Right.
So that goes towards the building costs of the new YMCA. Like all of our, most all of our programs, probably one or two that don't, we expect transit to have a balanced budget. It should stand on its own. If it can't, then we have to find support for it, and that means contributions and, and public support, that's part of being a nonprofit. But that allows us to keep the costs as affordable as possible. That city grant is going, frankly, it's paying off the construction debt.
Correct. Okay, thank you. And, and as you've already explained, you know, you, you feel like in three years, that, you know, Medicaid, you know, that you'll be up, up to the point where that would get you at least break even, if not better, hopefully. So you're looking at a three-year commitment right now, and, and for something to be reconsidered maybe after that point. But that you said that early on, I just wanted to clarify, clarify that, because early on, I had heard a five-year commitment, and, and so, and I know that the county is open-ended, but, you know, with all of our budget situations with the recent SB one, I, I feel like, you know, we really can't make a commitment beyond three years, and so I appreciate your understanding on that.
It took us a year to get the Medicaid recertified. You know, the, the wheels of federal government ran very slowly. We anticipate a significant increase this year in Medicaid revenue, and then next year we'll be able to evaluate what that budget looks like. You know, I don't know if we make up the entire three dollars per ride. And that, that is also a little bit of moving number. If gasoline drops, then that cost per ride goes down, the insurance goes up, and so we thought a three-year window was reasonable, and it allows us to repair. We know, okay, there's twelve thousand that we don't have to find somewhere else. I think this is a really good program that is offered to a lot of the citizens here in town. Some means of transportation. And I was emailing Stacy, and in twenty-three, the Cass County Transit was in danger of losing their transit program. And the county and city each gave a hundred thousand in twenty-three, and then the city gave another hundred in twenty-four, and the county gave another fifty. So, I mean, twelve thousand in the grand scheme of things is very minimal. I actually thought that, maybe even in the first year, I talked to Andrea to see a little bit more the first year, just to kind of get you guys headed in the right direction. That's my opinion.
Drew, I agree with you on how important this program is for our community, and how many people it actually helps, that I think there are a lot of people, maybe in the public, that don't understand that these transit rides are more than just, you know, going, going to the Y or something like that. And another thing to reiterate is that this is not a YMCA funded program. So I do think that it is something important that we do need to keep in our community.
Mark and Stacy, I had mentioned, you know, we talked earlier last week, but this is such a great program, in my opinion. I mean, for seniors, I, I think the city has a responsibility to take care of the elderly seniors, but not only that, and of course, the medical needs. You know, that's showing people, the public, hey, you know, we care about you. We want to meet your needs, and, but you go beyond that. I mean, you, people need food even, so I, I was impressed at what else you have covered,
you know? I think, I think about it this way. If I didn't have a car, how would my life change? If I had no means to get to the store, except for my two feet and maybe a bicycle? How much could I carry home on, on that? Something that we take for granted every single day, and the Y is honestly humbled by this, this program that puts us in the lives of people that we want to help.
For sure.
And so many people are in wheelchairs, that their family can't get somewhere they need to go. So even if they do have supportive families, which many of our seniors actually don't have family members that are helping them. And so even if they do have the family members that can help them, maybe they just have a small car, or they, you may not be able to take them in a wheelchair, and they've got to get, they've got to get to medical, clinical, sexual, and tons of dialysis, cancer treatment, all kinds of medical needs that they won't be able to handle themselves. And that's just, I mean, that's just what happens, you know? People won't get to work. There's a lot of low-income people that want to work, but can't get to work because they have a bad car, or bad insurance, or they've lost their license or something.
And there are also students that ride as well, correct, to, to school, and so those, those kiddos wouldn't necessarily get to school without it.
Yeah, actually, almost thirty percent of our rides are going to some school or another. And that could be elementary school, high school, middle school, or Ivy Tech, Delta Education, that's the whole gamut, but it's a, it's a big need. And some of it is, you know, we're, we're supplemental to what the school district does. The school district buses are full, and so when parents need, because of their work schedule, or some other family schedule, when it doesn't quite line up with the school bus, that's when we, we fill in. A lot of it's across district lines, but some of it's just going down the street because they just can't be there at the right time.
Is this a YMCA, as far as what dictates what is a senior? I mean, you have sixty plus, or, you know, the use of the Y Transit program. That's not something that our local Y has dictated. It's, it's.
It's, it's funding-based, so Area Five is the main funder for, they, they provide partial funding for their senior rides. They set at sixty, sixty, sixty or up.
Okay, okay.
Most of the decisions that we make, we don't get to make.
Okay.
Because the regulations are either federal or state.
Yeah.
And, and it's the most, frankly, our drivers are the most screened from the physical and mental fitness than any other driver system you can think of. Our vehicles are screened more than any of the vehicles you can think of. It's a, it's, there's a lot of rules and regulations, and that's a big part of Stacy's job, is to keep us within those rules.
And that's just what I wanted to clarify, yeah. All right.
Is this something we take a vote on, or does this?
Yes, it will. Any more questions from the council? Stacy and Mark, we want to thank you for the information you've provided tonight. Also, thank you for the service that the YMCA provides to our citizens of Peru.
Well, we couldn't do it without the community's support, including this council. So we'll be right back.
So yes, this would be an opportunity for the council. The funds, location of the funds have been identified through SEDIT. So the money is, is available at the council's decision on whether to approve or deny.
I would make a motion that we approve it and move forward. Second?
Third.
I want to clarify that, that it's for twelve thousand for three years.
Yes, yes. And roll call, please.
Stevenson?
Yes.
Ori?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Huber?
Yep.
Murphy?
Yes.
Cy Duchy?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next item under new business is a request from Chief Feller to purchase eighteen new laptops and twenty-one new laptop mounts for the Peru Police Department. Chief Feller?
Good evening. I, I know for this request, I've, I'll make an apology that I haven't spoken to each of you individually about this. Mr. Fisher has been involved in some meetings and then some conversations about this, so we would prefer to do this during the normal budgeting cycles as we would ordinarily expect. However, Jim Denniston from Ten Crypto, who is our IT contractor, is here tonight. He can answer any questions that are above my minuscule understanding of IT. But the, the short version of the story is, is that back in February, Jim notified me of some changes in some federal regulations through, basically, the, the FBI runs, runs, effectively regulates the information that comes to the computers that are in our cars and to the nine-one-one consoles, things of that nature. The stuff that our guys use to do their jobs every day, to figure out whether somebody has a warrant, whether somebody's missing, be able to run a license plate, for example. So the, the regulations changed on that to basically say that we have to go to a Windows eleven-based computer system in our cars. We were not ultimately, obviously not prepared to do that. That was not something we were aware of during budgets, budgeting time for twenty twenty five. So we would stand to potentially lose the service that we have in our cars due to federal regulations. They would shut us out. It has to do with Windows ten coming to its end of life in September of this year. We previously had something very similar to this happen to us back in twenty twenty, when we purchased the tablets that are currently in our cars. So what we're looking to do now is actually replace the tablets with laptop computers. That's, they're a little more efficient for our guys and women who work for us. That's what they want. And ultimately, as we were having some discussions with the city over our five-year plan, the things that we, I guess we're looking to do is to build something like this into that five-year plan, understanding that computers over a five-year period are probably going to come to its end of life anyway. But on the back end of this, what we're hoping to do is not have to purchase any more desktops for our offices. So if you go to the police department, if you've been in there recently, you'll see that we've replaced all of our desktops over the course of the last two years. With the, with the laptops, it would be, it effectively will be, when you hire in here, we're going to assign you a laptop. They'll be able to take these out of their cars, be able to work from inside the building. Ultimately, if we have to replace our desktop computers, we would put docs in there so that they could, if they need to look at a bigger screen, they could do that, or if they preferred to have some normal keyboard, they would be able to do that. So our plan was to try to work on that over the course of five years until this kind of landed in our, our lap back in February. So we had a lot, we have a little bit of time to deal with this. We've gotten multiple quotes for this, this project. I think the quote that, I think you may have gotten it in your packet, the overall cost is right at about $53,000. I'm sorry, $55,679. I'll tell you that the competitor to that, which is Panasonic, it was going to be roughly about $110,000, $112,000 to do the exact same project. So we're going directly to Dell and their government division. Andrea's been very helpful because they're a little bit difficult to get through all our, all of our tax-exempt forms and, and get them to accept those. So she's worked very hard on this with us. And so I'll point out that we do have some laptop computers currently that do, that are laptops that are not currently in use. And when we get our new cars in, which should be sometime, hopefully this month, those are going to be deployed into our, our new cars. So that's why there are only 18 laptops that are being ordered because we're going to utilize what we currently have. And then the, the reason for the additional mounts is so that we can have those mounts put into the, our, our pool cars or our spare cars that we'll have in case a car gets crashed like we've had happen or in case a car's in the shop, something like that. They would not be without the ability to use their computers. So that's kind of where we're at now. I'm happy to entertain any questions you, you all might have. Again, I apologize that I did not have an opportunity to meet with all of you individually or talk to you individually before tonight.
Well, you know, you and I talked actually this afternoon and, well, these all will have Windows 11 on it.
Yes, absolutely.
What about the laptops, the laptops you already have?
The tablets that we have? Yeah, they're.
Well, well, not the tablets, but you have some other laptops?
We do.
Okay.
Yes, those had been purchased by previous administrations. They, so when we send someone to the academy, for example, we have to supply them with a laptop computer to be able to work when they're down there. So the computers that we have now would, they're, they're currently sitting in an office absent the, our folk, our, our one officer is at ILE now. So the, the computers that we have, we have enough to deploy immediately. They're still in good standing, Windows 11, everything's good there. It's just that the tablets that we have are not capable of doing what we need to.
Yeah, I had shared with you, I was surprised at that, that you didn't have laptops and docking stations. Ultimately, you're going to save money because you won't have to, to buy desktop.
Correct.
So.
Correct. And currently, I, I mean, we had laptops when I hired in here in 2002. We made the transition away probably in about 2014. So, and it's, then we replaced them in 2020. So currently, some of the statutes in the state of Indiana have changed to the point that we could have officers, we don't currently have officers living this far away, but we could have officers living as far as 50 miles away and be within compliance of state statute. So if they have an issue that we catch in paperwork or something that they need to do when they, after hours, when they get home, it's not really reasonable to ask somebody to drive 50 miles to come back here to make a correction. Currently, they have to go out and sit in their car to make that type of correction for our officers who maybe don't live in the county. But with this, they could take it into their house and be able to work maybe a little more comfortably and a little more reasonably. Or to be able to work remotely if we have to have somebody that needs to work remotely, a detective or something like that.
And the tablets that you have, the tablets that you have, those aren't traded in. You, you pull the, assume they have a hard drive or do they even have a hard?
So we'll have to, Jim can speak to that on what we need to do to be what's called SIGIS compliant, which is the federal regulations around this, the criminal justice information systems. So I know that we have to wipe them or effectively erase them. There's no trade-in value to Dell for a Panasonic product.
Oh, okay.
So our plan would be, we're going to have these, these tablets that are still usable, they're still workable. So we would open that up to any of this, any of the other city departments to see if any of them want them and want to repurpose them. If we're able to do that, we'll obviously transfer the, the equipment directly to them and be able to, they can use them for whatever they need to.
And the funding would come from, the funding?
CEDIT.
Again, this is something that I would have preferred to have done in the normal budget cycle. But we basically had seven months' notice before we had to do something. And unfortunately, we didn't know we were creating a 2025 budget.
That's exactly what happened with the last tablet. It was like, right now we had to do it because they were changing the software.
We had, we had a little shorter timeframe there. I believe we had like a two-month timeframe there. So I'm grateful that Jim gave us enough notice to know that we, we had seven months to prepare for this and go out and try to find a good, workable solution at, at what we consider to probably be the best price we could get.
Chief, I see that the expiration date on this quote is June 6th.
You're correct.
So are we at a point where we need to make this decision tonight?
Yes, I, I've talked to Andrea, at least the ability to approve the purchase for me so that I can get that into Dell and they can start working on the order. And then if the council chooses to do an appropriation in July, I think that that will be fine.
Any more questions from the council, comments?
My only comment is I, I know what you're going through with this because we're dealing with it at the dental office, so.
It's, it's, at, at its root core, it's, it's an unfunded federal mandate on us.
Yeah.
Then I would ask for a motion from the council to accept or deny the request from Chief Feller.
Make a motion, we, or we approve the request from Chief Feller?
I'll second that.
And roll call.
Holry?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Huber?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Cy Duxne?
Yes.
Stevenson?
Yes.
Thank you, thank you, Chief. Next item under new business is Resolution 11-2025, Peru Municipal Electric Utility Rate Adjustment for the Third Quarter of 2025. Do we have a motion to consider Resolution 11-2025?
I make a motion, we consider Resolution 11-2025?
Second.
And roll call.
Anderson?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Huber?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Cy Duxne?
Yes.
Stevenson?
Yes.
Holry?
Yes.
Thank you. Josh?
Evening. So today is the third quarter tracker for the electric. It's the pass-through energy costs. So when the cost of energy goes up to our customers, we pass that through. When it goes down, we pass that through as well. So the last three quarters, it has went down, that includes this quarter. So it goes down another 47 cents per 1,000 kilowatts. And so through, since December 31st, including the CPIU adjustment that went up last month, the rates have decreased by 3.99%. So, you know, we'll take it while we can get it. But, but again, this is just the energy pass-through cost. We don't have, this isn't operational, so we, we don't really dictate that energy cost. It is, it's what, it's what comes to us and, and what it costs us to purchase it. So, good to bad, I suppose, good this time. Any questions? Easy enough.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Josh. Do we have a motion to adopt Resolution 11-2025?
I make a motion that we adopt Resolution 11-2025?
Second.
And roll call.
Fisher?
Yes.
Huber?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Cy Duxne?
Yes.
Stevenson?
Yes.
Holry?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Thank you. Last item under new business is Ordinance 14-2025, An Ordinance to Establish Boundaries of Election Districts. Do we have a motion to consider Ordinance 14-2025?
I make a motion.
I'd make a motion to consider Ordinance 14-2025?
Second.
And roll call.
Huber?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Cy Duxne?
Yes.
Stevenson?
Yes.
Holry?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Thank you. Andrea, would you like to give a explanation of this ordinance?
Basically, a law was passed a couple of years ago that the districts have to have equal representation, where our current districts do not. We weigh heavy in one district and light in another district. So in order to be compliant and not fined, we had to redistrict by moving some population around in the districts.
This is due to population and census change. And each district has to be within a certain percentage of the other districts to comply with this, which is the need to, I guess, restructure some of the boundaries. It does not change any of the districts that currently any of you take care of. But it is a requirement that we do this every time we get a census.
Correct. So every 10 years, federal census, decennial census. And it's required that we update our voting districts to reflect, like the mayor said, reasonable representation in each one. So one district has 2,500, the other has 12. It doesn't make sense, let's try to balance this out, even though that's what state statute requires us to do. And that's exactly what this is attempting to do. You can see the word they use is.
DB?
Yes. Sorry.
I'm good.
Any questions, comments from the council regarding this?
And I don't want to put it this way, but who are the winners and losers on, on this in terms of? I, I know I've lost quite a bit of, you know, in terms of population. And I don't know where those went to. Is there any like before and after? I know there's an after, but.
If you look at Exhibit B?
Yes.
It should have the target population, it has the current population, has target population, and it shows above or below.
That's, that's after this, this got mapped out.
Correct.
Yeah. So I really don't know, say, how many I lost in my, in District 2. You know, and where did they go? Did they go to District 5 or did they go to District?
I think that would be a question for the person who redid this.
I would say your district decreased by about 300.
Yeah.
Where did they go? To another district?
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
It is a requirement that we do this through the state, so we're complying with that, with that requirement.
Okay.
Will the, will the people that live in those districts be notified somehow from the city that they are in a different?
On the day they vote.
Further notice, other than be on the city website. I will go, if you guys don't pass this, come July, or July 1st, you guys will be fined.
Yeah. Because it has to be.
I make a motion where council's legislative body members will be fined by the state.
Well, that, the city gets fined, the council members lose their pay.
There's your instance.
So any more discussion regarding Ordinance 14-2025?
Nope.
If not, I'd ask for a motion to consider Ordinance 14-2025.
I make a motion, we adopt Ordinance 14-2025?
Second.
And roll call, please.
Murphy?
Yes.
Cy Duxne?
Yes.
Stevenson?
Yes.
Holry?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Huber?
Yes.
Thank you. Seeing nothing further under new business, are there any communications from the council? Communications from the audience? Yes, sir.
Can the public get a copy of the new map of the districts?
Yes, we'd be happy to give you that copy. Seeing nothing further, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn. Second.
This most, this meeting's adjourned, thank you very much.